Yeah. Is there a plan or suit up is what it's for?
Because the, uh, the envelope with all the red writings, like, yeah, that was in our box.
Yeah.
So that, it must have been switched.
Jennifer put that in my box.
The red envelope?
Yep.
No, that, it actually wasn't, that was put in our box.
Really?
Yeah. I sort of, I put it in the box. Mike, this is not for me.
A lot of computer work where they go. A lot here.
Next time on the.
That's surprising. Usually right, maybe that bills here. We know it's surprising that.
Just everything that's mine.
I said finally with my house.
At six o'clock, I'm already.
Where are they?
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, our two B reports, we had our joint water meeting a couple of weeks ago. I don't have anything other than that. I will note that I have been talking with Kristen. She and I have been known a few times, talking with the manager of Tractor Supply to get the rain girl thing up and running. We have the forms ready to go. I'm just waiting on some numbers from Tractor Supply so we can get that finalized and started. Uh, he was supposed to get me something today. I didn't get it, so I'll follow up with it tomorrow and let that fly. That's all I have in terms of an update. Neil?
Uh, the 27th of August, we got the fire department annual meeting. And the contract was approved by all, uh, the, all entities. The 28th, I had Green Roof, uh, meeting, monthly meeting. Biggest thing they got going is to construct a walkway off the back door for the snow issue and ice. Uh, 28th evening was the joint end scenes bill meeting. And that's on our agenda tonight. The Thursday, September finance met and recommend approval of the 25 budget, which is also on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, can I interrupt you for just a second? Kristen, are we live? I'm not seeing the microphone lights are on.
I don't know.
Just want to make sure that we're not losing something. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Neil, I'm sorry to take you off.
Okay. Do I need to start over?
No.
No.
Uh, we had the finance meeting, the third of September, recommend approval of the 25 budget. That's Ray's agenda. Just got done with Public Works. Uh, got the report of our irrigation, uh, pivots and all the water they took. We're working on a grant for chloride salt reduction.
All right, I hear.
I have actually not had any formal.
Okay, Gene.
I just had the joint water. End scene meeting.
And same as Gene.
They were not busy for Gene.
They look pretty quiet.
Just Neil.
I was also at the fire department meeting before we have heard that's right. Uh, we'll go into our apartment head and words, Ron.
Great, thank you. But whether we have, we're going to keep this spot open for another week or two, whether for medic. Um, parks will be open till October 7th. The RP dump and the compost, uh, the usage I can see involved. I can remind people they are both operated on loanations, so please utilize the donation box area. Uh, leaf pickup, we are looking at either October 26th or November 2nd. We have not, if it is on the schedule there. Like to remind residents, um, do you have any trees in the sidewalks? Please trim them up. And we will also be around doing a sidewalk inspection. So if you see crews running around, walking around, that's what they're doing. Um, striping, um, for the Seal Co project yet, it'll likely happen the end of this week or next week. Airport crack seal, we're still looking at the September 16th start date. That'll run, uh, for approximately eight to nine days. Ampe Park, uh, donation, we did receive another $10,000 from the line stuff. Like a $10 big thank you to them for that generous support. Airport fuel so far this year, we are running right around that 17,000 gallons, which, uh, puts us right on track to. Last year we used 21,000, so it's looking very good out there. Talked to a couple of the members from the front of the airport. They're, they're very happy with the plan and the usage, training, everything that's going on there, so. Thank you.
Ron, did they start the, um, shelter?
Shelter will start, uh, everything except to, there was a delay in getting the block. And you didn't want to open a hole up and really sit there without the block. So likely sometime next week or week after.
Okay.
And then when were you planning on going around and doing the sidewalk inspections?
When the sidewalk inspections?
Uh, sometime this week.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Ron? Okay, Tarek.
All right, um, well, the meetings that were already mentioned, I'll just say them again. We had the fire contract meeting, uh, the joint council meeting on the contamination report, budget and finance, which of course we'll be discussing again tonight. Uh, also had several liquor store interviews, uh, which, um, you'll see on the agenda as well. Uh, and then Bill Spooner and a couple of us got together and we were discussing, uh, coming up with a draft cannabis ordinance. So I think we have that ready to present, uh, policies and procedures. And then, uh, Ron, Chuck and I had a meeting with Mindot on the Highway 55 bridge that they're going to be doing in the summer of 2026. Just talking about aesthetics and design, trying to get our, our thoughts on what we'd like to see. So we kind of have some room to choose, uh, some type of design that would work well with us. So they'll, they'll get back to us on some choices that we kind of pre-selected already. And, uh, yeah, that was it.
All right. Any questions for Tarek? Okay, I don't see anybody here for our open forum. Moving on then to the consent agenda includes the minutes on page one for the meetings listed there. Vouchers on page two totaling 259,58331. Is there approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda or does somebody want anything removed? Motion to approve. Motion by Hersberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sonya. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. All right. Page three, discussion of the police prosecution services. Um, as Jennifer noted on the agenda, this is bringing it back. When we approved this contract, we said we wanted to discuss it prior to its renewal in case we wanted to change anything. Um, in advance of this meeting, I did reach out to the chief and to Janelle Kendall. Cause I thought if either party had some issues, we should probably try and tackle them before coming on the record and saying, oh no, either one is terrible. But, uh, I was, I'll let the chief speak to his experience, but since Janelle couldn't be here, she shared that things are going wonderfully from her end. She had nothing but praise for the department. Um, Paul, she couldn't give details, of course, but I guess there's some investigation you're working on with the new guy. And she's singing your praises up on that. So, uh, that's what she had to say and I'll let you share your comments, but.
Yeah, um, there haven't been any issues so far with them. Um, there's, yeah, I mean, as far as I can tell, all of our cases and stuff like that are being handled. We're getting our stuff back in a timely manner for prosecution purposes and charging out. So, um, it, uh, it has gone really well. So I think, uh, most guys in the department are pretty happy with where we're at with them, so. And we've got some good contacts in there now, which didn't necessarily exist before, so that's been a positive too.
One that's going away.
Yeah, with the one exception, who's now a judge, but his, his replacement, uh, or at least replacement contact for us has been really good, especially in this case that we're working right now, so.
So no desire to change things right now?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no reason to.
All right.
And there's some, there's some reasons to stay with them, so.
Assuming the council feels the same way, otherwise we could bring this back. Good deal.
Well, it's working to go.
Okay. Moving on then to the proposed resolution on the petroleum cleanup. We were all here for the meeting. I won't beat a dead horse and regurgitate everything that was said, but the consensus unanimously was that, uh, we push the MPCA for greater cleanup efforts. Tarek and I sat down, Ron joined us as well last week. Um, Bill got us the start of a resolution here and we put the rest of this together. And then Friday, mid Friday afternoon, I received a phone call from somebody at the MPCA wanting to discuss and get their perspective on things. I was going to give them a call back this morning and the day got away from me. So that will be on tomorrow's agenda. But, uh, I think Mark Dusso made the comment that the MPCA is watching and I sort of acknowledged that then. I think sure enough, they are paying some attention to what we've got going on. So I'll follow up with them tomorrow and report back at our next council meeting. But in talking to Tarek and Ron, uh, my understanding, and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, is that in the past, whenever we've discussed this, it's sort of been the city standing by itself pushing for cleanup. And I think if we're going to get anywhere, we need to bring in all of the neighboring organizations. The lake associations, the township, uh, the county, everybody, and get similar petitions.
I can add to that, Sean.
Yeah.
I talked to Steve Lumke last week and after the resolution passes through tonight, he wants me to go to the township meeting tomorrow night and present it to them.
Okay.
So they can come up with their own recordings and everything else. And then we'll just, once we, uh, this gathers momentum, it'll, um, it seems like it's going to go a little smoother.
Yeah, and I wanted to start here to see, you know, we drafted this, but if the council wants to change anything, we can. And then go to the townships. If you want to go, Paul, go.
Mm-hmm.
Um, take it to the lake associations, take it to the other organizations, get it passed. And then schedule a meeting using these resolutions to show the MPCA that we really do want something done here. And hopefully get more momentum that way.
Should help.
So the resolution is in here, this is what we came up with. A couple of things to hit on. You know, we talked about the long history of it. Uh, we looked for, or we tried to really put the language in addressing how we're concerned about the future. Um, that was what Mark had really talked about, was that these studies, and I think I heard it from Barr as well, that it was unclear on how these studies looked at the future. Uh, so really put an effort on, on that. And then put language in here about the effects of climate change and how that might affect. Because we do know that leadership at MPCA is appointed by the governor right now. And that this language might be more persuasive to, to that. So we drafted this, I think that this is appropriate and I would recommend that we adopt it. But I would certainly entertain any changes as well.
Looks fine. I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2024-27, petitioning the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for cleanup of petroleum contamination from the former Midtown gas station gas leak.
The motion by Sonya is stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Neil. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries.
Can you get a copy of this to bring up to them tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Does she have one in here?
No.
So we have the airport crack repair project grant on page one of our update. Ron or Chuck?
Okay, thank you. I guess it would sure be nice if the FAA and state ran on the same schedule. Previously, we had approved the FAA's portion of it. This is the, which their portion is 5%, as is the city's. And that is the $9,168. Um, and they're scheduled to start, uh, next week on it, so I think it would be a very good idea that we. They only got, I think it was last Thursday.
So with this, let me just clarify that I'm understanding you correctly. The state's picking up through this application its share of the 9168. The city will still pay that same amount.
Correct.
With that, we're looking for a motion to approve the Mindot grant agreement and resolution 2024-28.
So move.
Motion by Brick is stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Right, hiring of some part-time liquor store clerks. We have recommendations to hire two folks at grade one, step one. Any need to discuss or is there a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sonya to hire the folks at the pay listed on the action sheet. Any further discuss, or is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Right, teahanger and storage leases. Over to you, Ron.
Okay, this, uh, glad to report that, uh, with us here at least for the teahangers, that we are 100% full on the hangers. On the storage units, and we do have two more, if anybody else wants a storage unit, they are $125 per month. So everything, like I said before, is, uh, running very smoothly out there currently. And, uh, we are 100% full and we'll be starting a waiting list at this point.
So with that, we're looking for a motion to approve the teahanger lease agreement between the city and Larry Matheny and the storage lease with Brad Melhop.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sonya, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion?
Uh, how many of those storage units are available?
There's two more.
How big are they?
Well, they're in shape for the half of a teahanger. So they're 38 feet deep, but a portion of them is only like 10 foot width. The front portion is, I think about 16.
I'm just thinking from the PD perspective, might be easier to have our.
Bicycles?
Yeah, have our cold storage out at the airport versus renting other property.
You'll have to go take a look and see if it'll work.
All right. There's a motion by Sonya, seconded by Brick is stated on the action sheet. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Right, on to page 30 of the agenda, the Tyler Tech access bundle. Tarek's going to tell us a little, I think Kristen said she was going to come up too.
Okay, um, yeah, we had a call with Tyler Tech. If you don't, not familiar with Tyler Tech, we use their accounting system. Uh, this is a bundle they're adding on top of it so we can do online payments for utility bills. It makes it more seamless and more integrated. Uh, residents will be able to see their account, uh, pass billing, their usage. Uh, and it saves, or automates a lot of the work, so it'll be less work for Kristen and less work for Zach to do on the accounting side as well. So we did get a preview of what it would look like and we talked to them about the, the details of it. And, uh, if you look at the numbers that were presented to you on the council agenda, it doesn't give you the full picture. There's some added fees that go along with it. Uh, I think on the action sheet, you'll see that it's, it's more accurate. The annual fee is going to be about 1,596 or $1,584, the, uh, ongoing fee for this. But we think it's well worth it because of the, not only gives residents more access to their account and billing, but it also, um, you know, automates the process much more and makes it easier for us. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Uh, just basically the main thing is the customer side of it is going to be a lot more user friendly. And then with this also, we can finally add e-billing as an option. People can actually, you know, skip on the postcards that we send, so that's less for us to stamp, less for us to send out. And it gives the use, it gives the residents a lot more control on their account too. They can see their consumption, all of that. And, you know, again, I love that it does make my job easier too. Like it integrate with our current online or our current utility billing. And basically any changes I'd make to any bills or anything will show up online real time, which is a current issue we have with our current process where, you know, I'll add a late fee and, you know, upload it to the online pay and people won't see that late fee until, you know, the next day. And so this would save a, save me a lot of trouble, but it's also a very good option for the residents as well.
Kristen, could you share a little bit about what you and I were discussing earlier about the option for like future park billing and things like that?
So that is an option. It wasn't like the main focus of the presentation, but it is included with this package is what it's considered a miscellaneous pay. So how it is, is we can direct residents or whoever to a, basically a link to another page of being this is the price you need to pay for this or this or this, so please pay that online. Or we could give them the option to, you know, come in and write a check. That is something we, again, we'll have to look into it a bit more. It's, and just see the logistics, but from what I can tell, it should be something that we can actually implement online pay. It's not, it won't be the smoothest as what you see for like, you know, Amazon or online shopping, but it would be some way for us to actually like allow residents to do more online and they'd be able to, you know, again, pay online.
If we get everybody doing e-billing, we could do monthly water bills.
I mean, we could, yeah.
Well, we have to move in that direction, I think, anyway.
Yeah, I think so too. I've been saying that for quite a few years.
I like.
I like monthly.
I don't like doing how much I'm using.
When you're on a fixed income, monthly works the best.
Did you have a question, Neil?
Do we know our, uh, our current annual, uh, payment to, uh, payment services or?
I'm not sure on the current. Part of that, I mean, part of what it is, is, you know, when a resident pays by checking account, they're, pays their water bill by checking account, there's no additional fee. If they pay by credit card, they have that additional fee added. So PSN only charges us, the city pays that online fee for e-checking. The PSN only charges that 50 cents, where Incode will be charging a dollar 95. So it is a decent increase, but it is something where, you know, most utility companies do have it where if you pay by check or e-check as they call it, there's no additional fee. Where you pay by card, there's an additional fee. And it is something that it's nice for the residents to, you know, not be forced to pay a fee every time they have to pay something. And so it is something we encourage, we keep doing, is that the city pays for that e-checking fee. And so yes, it's increased, but, you know, hopefully.
Well, I'm kind of looking at the 1,600.
Mm-hmm. I know the 16, I don't know the exact amount. That would be a question for Belinda.
I mean, we're paying something now for the.
Yeah, it's less than what it is predict, the 1,600. I know it's that, but again, you do not, you get a lot more features with this. So it is, cause right now our current PSN is residents can see their balance and pay their bill and that's about it. There's not much to it. I get calls all the time, you know, of people asking, hey, how do I change my account banking information? And I can't help them. Like, you know, I have to direct them to PSN. There, I get a lot of questions, you know, about PSN and I can't help them because I have no control over that website. And where Incode, like, I still don't have access to their payment information or anything. But with this, you know, it's a, it's more user friendly where people can manage their account better than what the current process is.
What's the timeline on getting this up and going?
Uh, I believe they said from approval and sending it in, we could get going in like six to 10 weeks or, I believe.
It's a couple of months, yeah.
Yeah, I know we were aiming, when we did the presentation, we were aiming for rollout to be the end of the year.
Yeah.
So by December. And so that would include marketing, campaigning, all of that. Gives, sending residents information on, you know, hey, we're moving to this. You'll have, if you're due e-pay or auto pay, you'll have to switch over to this system. But we were planning on having that. I think we were having marketing out by, you know, November, December, do that section for marketing. And then by that, by the time that last quarter bill gets sent out, we would be live on the new system, so.
Do you know, Kristen, would this system have the ability to, um, take like citation payments for the city tickets, so like parking?
With a miscellaneous payment, I would say so, yeah. We would, should be able to build that up.
You just have to know when the payment comes in, what it's for, cause it'll just be on the miscellaneous.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we, and I think we can set it up where, you know, when they make a payment, there might be, there's a note section, I do believe, that you can like write in a note or request them to type in certain information for the payment or.
Yeah. I was trying to find Ron's water budget to see if we could see a number for PSN from last year, but I don't see it. I share Neil's concern that 1,600 is a lot, but if we're expanding our capabilities the way that we are and we can go into future things like park reservations, citation payments, whatever else we might do, then I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah, and this system does also, I know we looked at it in the past, the smart meters. This does, this system does have smart meter integration capabilities. So when we want to ex, if we want to expand into the smart meters, it would integrate into that as well, and so.
Well, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Well, how would the council like to proceed? We have a recommendation to approve the bundle and have the city cover the dollar 95 e-check charge.
I'll make the motion to approve the Tyler Technologies Utility Access Bundle Agreement and have the city cover the dollar 95 e-check charge.
Motion by Sonya is on the action sheet to approve the bundle agreement and cover the charges. There are seconds?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Uh, Kristen, can you clarify on the e-check?
Mm-hmm.
Is that for all payments or just those run through credit debit card?
So that 195, that is just for those who pay by checking or savings account. So the credit card fee will still apply if they're paying for credit card, they'll still have that added fee. That 195 is just for those paying by a checking or saving account.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Right. Another thing that Jen put on here for discussion is the annual tree lighting event. Um, Tarek, I'll let over to you, your name's on there first.
Well, yeah, um, this is something that we planned last year and we, you know, got a few organizations together to kind of try to coordinate all the events around town. Um, I mean, I think it went okay, um, but, uh, I'm not sure what we're going to do different or what you guys want to do different this year.
I'm good. I thought, um, I mentioned Parks was going to talk about it a little bit. Have they had the opportunity to do that or, you know, they've been dealing with the ampy shelter a little bit too, so maybe that got in the way.
Yeah, there hasn't been any discussion at the park level.
We have talked about it in the past, but it hasn't been anything recently that we've, we've kind of just handled it.
I think the whole point was for us to approve it so that the, you know, we got the liability covered and that sort of thing.
The city event, yeah.
And the only thing is from last year, the recommendation that it was awfully dark. We have to have some other lights so people don't trip and fall and little kids get lost. That's the only thing I heard that needed changing. And I know some organizations are already talking about coordinating their events for that same day. I know we are at the museum. So that's my input on it.
Would it be too soon to bring this to our first meeting in October for us to designate it as a city event?
No. Or too late.
Or is it too late?
I don't think it'll be too late.
Who's in charge?
The park committee.
Technically, yes. Um, I personally don't, um, plan to be as involved with it this year.
It's not like you have nothing else going on.
So, yeah, no, it's just, I think the last few years especially, it's kind of taken away from some time for, um, me personally, um, around the holidays. And I think it's become unnecessarily political in some regards, um, which is not ever what you want to see around the holidays. Um, but if, you know, the park board feels like it's something that they want to take on, um, obviously as part of the park board, I would be involved in that, but I just, I don't know that it will be the same scale as we've had the past few years or I think that'd be something we'd have to talk about with the rest of the park board.
Well, it probably should go to the chamber. They're already, you know, they're doing their Saturday.
That's not a bad idea.
I mean, that's, that's really where it should go.
I, I don't think that that's, yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea either.
Do we have a liaison to the chamber?
Yeah.
That means I'd have to go to a meeting. Yeah, but I, I can't on the 24th, I don't think. Yeah, I'll, somehow I'll connect with somebody on the chamber.
Okay.
Cause that's. 'Cause that's really where kind of...
I mean, obviously, we'll...
We can coordinate with them as far as a tree and getting the lights up and stuff with public works.
Yeah, 'cause even when there wasn't a ceremony, I mean, the, um, city workers always did a great job with the lighting of the park, and I don't think that that is something that there's any plans to change, I just don't know what kind of event is gonna be surrounding it from the city's perspective at this point.
Well, let's do this, let's bring this back to our first meeting in October. I don't want it to go up further than that.
No, I know.
No.
If we're gonna do it, we gotta...
Jean contacted the chamber. Jean, I encourage you to talk to Megan about what's been done in the past on the park board, and what involvement they might want to have. And, uh, somebody can take the lead to get this done, and we can designate it as a city event in October, or if somebody else around town figures it out. That goes from there.
Yep.
Okay, we'll bring that back in October. Right. Onto page 37 here, we need to set a public hearing, it's been suggested we do so for October 28th, to certify the past due utility bills to the county for taxes, something we do annually.
Motion to set a public hearing for 6:30 Monday, October 28th, for the purpose of certifying past due garbage, water, and sewer snow removal and mowing bills to the county.
Motion by Sonny, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg, to set a public hearing for 6:30 Monday, October 28th, for the certification of bills. Neil, I heard you, was that just to make the motion? Or did you have another comment?
I didn't make a motion.
Yeah, I thought I heard you start talking just as she did though, maybe I'm hearing something.
No, that's second, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Carries. Right. Belinda wants us to transfer some funds to pay on the assessments. Tarek, anything to add to this?
Uh, well, if you remember, we did the lot swap, um, to have more access to the empty park, and possibly have a drive rig, a second drive rig getting out of there. And when we did it, obviously, we made sure that the lot that we're swapping with, there was free and clear of any kind of assessments, however, a lot that the city owned had some assessments which we agreed to take on. So, now that we did the swap and concluded, uh, we agreed to take it out of the capital improvement fund for the park.
But the parks are happy about that.
Can we not just waive those assessments?
Well, they wanted that, uh, lot for their parking lot, or whatever, so they better be happy.
If it's not waived, then...
I'm not real happy, but that's okay.
Well, well, their park improvement fund is getting kinda low, is all I'm thinking.
And if not waived, the city eats it some other way.
Yes, that's true.
Well, it's not like the city eats it some other way, the city just...
At the end of the day, we're paying $16,670 for our Radaway Road access. We had a look at it.
I don't think we should pay it, myself.
Yeah, I don't see why we would take this to pay ourselves.
And our park, capital improvement's already low.
Well, it's for the park.
I know, but...
Empty park, and these assessments need to be paid, that's what every lot has.
Yeah, so it's showing up as a, a payment to be due, so if it's not, then it'll have to be written off somehow. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, it can be done, but...
Can it be done, Bill?
Well, I mean, it's an assessment that's owed to the city, that, I mean, there's, I don't know if that bond is paid off, or if that $16,000 is part of the payment on the bond that was used for the improvement. I don't, I don't know if the bond is still there, if it's still there, you need the $16,000 to keep your payments up. If the bond is, if the bond is paid off, I guess, it probably wouldn't be that important, but I'm, I'm assuming, I'm assuming there's still a bond payment there, but I, I don't really know.
I don't, I'm not sure about that, no.
I don't think there would be, this is quite an old project.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
We should grab it up first, then.
You see, we've been taking this amount for every lot that we sell.
Right.
To pay back what we owe.
Yep, we have been.
'Cause we bought them from the county, and the assessments were part of the package.
Right.
Right.
So, one, one fund or the other, the money's gonna be paid, it just...
Well, we could use...
I think for Belinda, it's a bookkeeping thing, but it's real money coming out of the park.
We can use our, um, not using capital improvement funds, use, what's the word I'm trying to think of all of a sudden?
Just dip into our reserves?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
But if we go into our reserves for it, then it's just reserves going to reserves.
Yeah, and, and this bond is, I know it's paid for, it, it's definitely, there isn't anything out there.
Maybe let's table this, let Belinda explain.
When Belinda's back.
We'll confirm on the bond, but I know if we don't pay it, it's gonna be paid from somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I, I get that it will have to be eaten somewhere else, but it's not like this is money... It, it's not like we are paying out $16,000, we've already paid it out, we're just not collecting it back. So, I mean, to say that, you know, we're suddenly going to be short somewhere, I don't know that we've budgeted for this, um, I think we're potentially shorting ourselves further by taking more out of the park improvement, but let's check on the status of the bond, 'cause that could change my opinion on things.
No, I like your idea.
Put it on the next to...
Do you need a motion to table, or?
Let's do that.
I'll make the motion to table.
There's a motion by Hersberg to table this to our next council meeting, is there a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Right. Proposed tax levy. Tarek, wanna tell us about this? Remind everyone that what we set here is the cap, there's the maximum amount, not the final amount.
Yep, um, if you see, yeah, we're, we're setting the levy, uh, from the general fund at $1,122,428. And then, uh, you know, we are trying to set it at, I would say, a reasonable amount, because once we set it, we can go lower when we do the revision, but we cannot go higher. So, when we sat down with Budget and Finance, and we went through the budget a couple of times to come up with this recommendation, uh, we did obviously make some cuts along the way, but overall, increase in the levy from last year for the city will be $208,904. And, yeah, this is the recommendation that we have coming to council tonight.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2024-26, adopting the proposed 2025 tax levy collectible in 2025.
Motion by Sonny is on the action sheet, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? One of the things that I'm hoping that we can see between now and certifying this, and Tarek, I guess I'm going to ask that you sit down with the labor negotiations team, is an MOU with our police contract, so that we don't have to budget for that fifth officer. If we hire that fifth officer, then we'll tip into our reserves, and we'll have to eat it. But to have to budget for somebody that we're not planning to hire, given the hiring climate, I think does a disservice to our taxpayers, 'cause we have to factor in the cost, and have that cost put on our taxpayers when we don't think we're gonna get somebody, or, maybe I'm wrong, maybe things are looking better, but...
It might only be half a year.
It might only be half a year, so...
We don't know, we're, yeah.
I'm saying keep the hiring process open, but don't bind us to budgeting for it. Because if we budget for it, that's $100,000 a year that we then have to assess to our, our residents. And if we collect it, if we have to eat it out of reserves, and then budget next year, I'm good with that. I'm good with hiring the officer, but I don't wanna budget for something if we don't reasonably think we're going to hire that person.
Yeah, and it works the flip side, if, if you budget for it and you don't hire somebody, that extra money ends up in reserves, so...
Which we've been, which we've been depleting.
We have been, so, that's my thought though, is that it's a sizable amount, realistically given the hiring climate.
Get out there, Paul. He enjoys it here.
No, I guess, I'm good, I'm not saying don't hire the officer, but I just, when we're looking at this much of a levy increase, I think we owe it to try and figure out a way to lower that down, and I can't find anything else in here other than that.
It's pretty lean, I mean, we, we cut.
And if the council disagrees with it, then we move forward with it, but I would like to, I think we owe it to at least explore that option, and I, I don't know if the council feels the same or not.
Didn't we do that last year?
That is what we did last year.
Yeah.
The difference is that this year, we have a, a contract that we approved in July that says we have to budget for five full-time officers, even if we don't employ five full-time officers. That was an addition made to the police contract when it was passed.
If we do, if we do not hire for it, then the money, if we, and then budget for it, then the money goes to build up reserves, if we don't budget for it, and we do hire for it, then it depletes reserves more. So, that's the flip side that we have.
So, yeah, if we don't hi, yeah, if we don't budget and we hire, we pull from the reserves, if we budget and don't hire, we replenish.
Yes.
Well, I wish we'd gone the middle then.
So, just to give two cents on that, I don't know that you need an MOU, I believe what the contract reads is that the city, um, the intentions is the city will maintain a PD based on those staffing ratios, how the city chooses to budget for that is entirely, does it say budget? Does.
I don't remember that either.
Yep, it says budget and advertise, and attempt to hire, the word budget is explicitly in there.
Attempt to hire.
So, and that's why I'm saying, like, maybe splitting the baby, maybe we budget for six months or something like that.
I, I kinda like Paul's idea of split half, and that way if we don't hire, we got... Half a year, half of a, a cycle budget for... We got 50 going in reserves, and if we do hire, we're short 50.
Yeah.
But that's a lot better position than to be 100 short, I, I would be good with that. Either way, it's gonna be a softer landing. But first, first we better make the contract up.
No, we won't have to do anything with the contract, because we're anticipating not hiring the...
So, we could go with half and still be okay?
In our budget, we're still budgeting for a police officer.
Right.
Okay, so, well, let's look at...
We better look at what the language of the contract says, I, I don't know if it says you gotta budget for a fifth full-time officer, then you need an MOU to say that you can budget for half of a full-time officer, I don't, I don't know, I don't...
Well, and we have time to figure that out.
Right, we do, that's why we're setting the maximum tonight.
Right.
And then, Tarek can look at the contract, talk to Labor Attorney, or whoever else he needs to talk to, and if you need to convey, or convene, excuse me, a meeting and negotiate an MOU, love to him.
That's fair.
But...
Yeah, we can't go up, but we can come down.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's the whole point.
Okay.
Got a motion, got a second?
Any other discussion? Okay, and the motion is to set the levy as stated on the action sheet. And that is a total amount of $1,445,321, with the general fund levy at 1.12 million, tax abatement at 10.5, and then debt service levies totaling $117,434,44,959, and $150,000. Any other thoughts on that? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Alright, then onto page 77, to set our truth in taxation hearing, we have a proposed date, and we get to it, but I think it's the 9th. Yes, December 9th at 6:30.
I will make the motion to set the truth in taxation public hearing for Monday, December 9th, 2024, at 6:30 PM.
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Hersberg is stated on the action sheet, seconded by Brick, to set the hearing December 9th at 6:30. Any further discussion on that? Does anybody here on the council remember when we stopped publishing hearing notices for this? Is that new this year, or have we done that? Has that been the case in years past?
We've always published them.
I think we publish it, but nobody ever shows up.
No, they don't, but...
We have to publish them, don't we?
We don't anymore.
Oh.
And I'm, my only thought is that maybe we still should.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we always have, why not?
Okay, well, Tarek will look into it, I still think we should publish.
I do too.
Okay. All those in favor of setting the hearing indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. We have our police department reports on page 78, and with that, folks, we are adjourned.
Forty-five minutes.